We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag. Thinking if I need to do that. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on now. Let's move right into, uh, we could call this Astronaut Warrior Eagle Day at City Hall. And if you don't know, um, I was Coach Diesel much longer than I've been Mayor Diesel. And it means a lot to me to have you here. Um, the fact that you have been so successful didn't just happen. You worked for it, you strove for it, you, you worked, and you've gained this, and it's an honor. So you not only represent yourselves when you're out there, and your school when you're out there, and your family when you're out there, but sometimes it's not noted enough, but you represent your city when you're out there. And it's a big deal to me, and to our council, and to our staff, and to our city, that we have a state champion bowling team, a Final Four bowling team, a Final Four basketball team. That's a big deal. And I wanted to take the opportunity for the city to recognize you in a proper manner. And quite honestly, being a rookie mayor, I wasn't sure what that was. So I inquired, and we discussed it a little bit, and felt like this was the way to do it. And again, and I said this before we went on air, thank you all for being here. And I know there's some people that can't be here, and I get that, but clearly, this meant something to you, and I appreciate you being here. And with that, again, congratulations, and let me just kind of start off by giving you, thank you. So City Manager, you're going to...
Yes, sir. As a housekeeping matter, I'd recommend that we move Agenda Item 4C to your first agenda item.
Do I have a motion? Second. All those in favor? So moved.
And with that... Coach Diesel, I think we need you to come forward, please.
The guy who can't wait to come to the...
So, um, in order to get this for the record, as, as we're presenting these, I'll need you to speak into the microphone. It's an area microphone, so it should be able to pick it up. But what I'd like to do is have, uh, Coach, or, Coach Diesel, present this...
Most of you know this, Dexter's kind of old, and, uh, and I'm older. So this means a lot to me, and that I was actually blessed to, uh, Coach Dexter, uh, help Coach Dexter. He didn't need a lot of coaching. On the 1988 Titusville High School Final Four team that went to Niceville, and didn't go well from there, but we did get there. So it's a real honor to see you step up and do the things that you've done in your coaching career. Congratulations. Alright, so, just, just so it don't mess this up, so now you're gonna call, give him the names, and we come across. Good call, City Manager.
Lucas Berline.
Okay. Congratulations.
Will Gibson.
Congratulations, Will. Congratulations.
Thank you. Adam Thomas.
Congratulations, Adam.
Jonathan Loudermilk.
Congratulations.
And Principal, if we could have you come join us in the photo here?
She's always, every time I go to an event, it doesn't matter, she's always back there doing the pictures and video. You gotta work her up here. Let's go.
Light it up for us. Alright, before I introduce the girls...
Hey, hold up before we get there. We need to make sure that everybody knows, and you saw the trophy, that's a state championship. It doesn't go higher than that. So, I mean, the rest of your lives, and your reunions, and, and your grandparent talk, you're a state champ, and no one can take that away from you.
I'll be short with the girls. Two years ago, my only two returning girls came to me and said, "Coach, we, um, it's only us. We don't have a bowling team. We need players." I said, "Well, I can get you players, but I can't guarantee they're gonna be good." I said, "But, um, if you want a team, I'll make a team." So we set out, started taking on names and addresses. Come August, I found four. And let me tell you, we sucked. We were pretty bad. But the one thing I can say is, going from those four girls' first year to now, I mean, what did we win? Maybe three matches, going from winning three or four matches to making it to the Final Four. Losing to the, um, losing to the, um, eventual state champion, Avito. I just wanna give your girls a round of applause, because in two years, what you've done is amazing. Alright, first up, Janice Agee. Janice is one of my second-year bowlers. Ashlyn Foster, I think she's working, but she's another second-year bowler. Dana Lichtenburn, who's my third-year bowler, who's coming back. Zoe Peoples, another second-year bowler. Madison Rhodes, another second-year bowler. And, um, probably the most spirited one on this team, the one that kept them together through the, um, state finals, Kaitlin Roberts. The last one came to us from Titusville last year. She's working today, Amber Saltzbaum.
And before we go with the basketball, let me say Athletic Director Cheryl Civil. Stand-up wave. And she's already been up here, but Principal Krista Miller, thank you, guys. Appreciate you being here. And now the boys' basketball team, Kyle Gilreath, head coach. And I really enjoy introducing the next guy, A, because we went back to, when I first got to Titusville High School in 1983, he was kind of my mentor, and I'll never forget his big words of advice, "If you unlock a door, re-lock it." So I've been doing it for however many years. Coach Gilreath.
Alright, so Coach, you'll go from there, I'm sure.
Billy D, assistant coach, he's at football practice. I will run into that for him. Austin Smith, assistant coach. Alex Relic, student manager. Evan Pavitt got quarantined, uh, last night, wasn't able to be here. Pictures outdoor, his, uh, football practice. Cory Waddell is also at football practice. Mal Tony got here, but scored, didn't he? Must've skipped track practice. Tyree Spell, also not able to make it today. Arch Ries. David Adalar, student manager.
Alright, let's, this way. Bro, come on. Hey.
No, I just want to say quickly, I am so extremely proud of all of our student athletes that are here. They are students first, and they have all excelled in the classroom, and on the court, and on the lanes. And I could not be more proud in a year such as this year with COVID, and as many challenges that you all have been through, from being restricted practices over the summer, to having to wear masks while you're playing, to me having to pull you off of the court or the lanes in the middle of a game due to a quarantine. You all handled this with grace, and not only with grace, you are all champions. So I am so incredibly proud of you all. We've never been honored like this for anything in front of a student, or a city council, at a city council meeting for this many students. So I am, this is such an honor for me to be here and watch you all be honored, as you should. And thank you also to all of the families, because it truly takes a village, and I am just blessed that you share them with me. So congratulations, and thank you, Mayor, for doing this.
My pleasure, my pleasure. And I was going to add, again, I talked again, I don't remember if it was before or after we turned on, but, uh, you guys will remember this the rest of your lives. You heard me talk briefly when Coach Diesel came up. We went to the Final Four. We didn't win at all, but we went to the Final Four. That's a year we'll never forget. Um, and so that's important. I look at you guys, and five years from now, 10-year reunion, 20-year reunion, this is a big deal. And it's gonna be a bigger deal 20 years from now than it is today. So I, I'm proud of you. I'm excited for you. Um, and I too wanted to mention to the parents, um, great kids from great families with great support. And I appreciate you being here. And I don't know what the rules are gonna be, but I hope I get to come to your graduation. So with that, congratulations. Thank you. Guys can go for you. Thank you for being here. That was fun. Well, we will. Since I'm here, that's, you know, the school part, yeah, we will. But you gotta get to the Final Four, and I can just do it for anything. You gotta, you gotta be at the state level of something. I don't care if it's science fair. I know. I mean, I taught science 13 years.
Hey, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan. Get your face in there. Alright, even though we didn't go into an official recess, that was kind of an informal recess, clearly to allow astronaut to leave. Uh, that was, um, really nice. It's really nice, and I hope that we can continue to recognize our, our students, especially for state-level accomplishments. So congratulations to Astronaut High School, their coaches, their staff, and their students and family. So that was, that was pretty awesome. Uh, Clerk, we're gonna digress a little bit. I, I jump to Astronaut quickly. Um, if you would read the rules to speak, please.
Sure. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will take, will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak to, may speak, may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign-up card is required. Citizens are given three minutes to speak.
Thank you, City Manager.
Yes, sir. We're on Agenda Item 4A. This will be a presentation of the FY 2020 Annual Audit of the City of Titusville as presented by the accounting firm of James Moore Certified Public Accounts and Consultants. Zach?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Council. Zach Shalifor, partner of James Moore &amp; Company CPAs. Uh, so we are here to discuss the annual audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2020. I'd like to start off by thanking Bridget, Jenna, and the rest of the finance team for all their hard work, uh, through this process. It was one where, I remember a year ago, when we did this presentation, I think it was your first meeting back in the, uh, post initial quarantine, I guess, whatever we call it, where this, uh, presentation, I recorded a video for you all. So it's great to actually get to be here with everyone this evening. Uh, and overall, you know, we'll go into some of the details, but overall, it's a very positive audit. Uh, the city's in a very strong financial position. As I noted, some of you all, I mean, in the, in the four years, uh, that we've now worked with the city as your external auditors, you definitely, uh, this year are in the strongest financial position that we've seen over the course of those four years that we've been involved. Uh, so before we look, look, um, most recently back, I do want to just look back to the 2019, uh, financial report, and highlight the fact that the city does prepare what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. Uh, ultimately, the, the large-bound document that staff prepares, about a third of that is additional above and beyond reporting, beyond what the state requires, uh, for the annual audit and financial statements. There are additional sections there related to statistical tables, and additional budgetary and combining schedules. And every year, staff submits that, uh, document to the Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, that was submitted again this year, and we expect that just like 2019, which I believe was the 37th, uh, consecutive year that the city has applied for and received that award, we expect the 2020, uh, report to receive that award once again as well. Uh, so as I mentioned, these financial statements, these are the city's financial statements prepared by staff. Uh, there are five reports that we issue as part of this document, uh, related to the findings of the audit. Uh, the first report that we issue is the audit report on the financial statements themselves. Uh, this is the standard audit report you would see, whether it's a government, a privately-held company, or even a public company. And we did issue an unmodified report, which is the best, or, excuse me, an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue, and states that the city's financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, effectively that they can be relied upon in terms of the numbers. The second report that we issue is on internal control and compliance. We are required to follow what's called government auditing standards. And while we're not auditing the city's internal controls, it's a financial statement audit. We are required to obtain a basic understanding of the controls, and if we come across any deficiencies as part of our testing over the financial statements, we would have to report those here. Uh, we had no items that met the most, um, significant level of material weakness. Uh, we did have one comment related to, um, certain audit adjustments on debt and capital assets that we did classify as a significant deficiency. Really, the key here, though, there was nothing that was operationally, uh, done improper, anything like that. Everything was spent appropriately. It was just in the year-end reconciliations, uh, we did have an adjustment to those numbers to get everything ultimately in the proper period and classified for this report. We do, however, have to communicate that, but again, nothing of a, of a major concern or otherwise. And again, everything operationally, uh, was handled appropriately. Uh, the third report that we issue is a single audit report. And here, if the city exceeds the threshold of $750,000 of federal or state grant expenditures, uh, we have to perform effectively a mini-compliance audit. Uh, the city exceeded that threshold on the federal side this year, and we did look, uh, a little more in-depth at the CARES Act money, uh, Coronavirus Relief Fund that was passed through, uh, primarily from the county. And we had no issues to report there with regard to the compliance over the use of those funds. The fourth report that we issue is a separate management letter required by the auditor general. Uh, here we look at a series of items, mostly on the side of financial condition, if, and certain, um, metrics or red flags. If there's any negative trends based on the state criteria, we would have to report those. As, uh, we'll talk about once we get into the numbers, the city wasn't even close, uh, to hitting any of those, as you all are in a very strong financial position. So we had no modifications, uh, to this letter as required by the state. And then the last report that we issue, uh, we have to look at the city's compliance with state statutes over investments and investment policy activity, and we did note the city to be in compliance with those specified statutes. Uh, one other side note this year is there was a separate audit report issued on the CRA. Uh, the CRA has always been audited as part of the city audit, uh, but there was a new state statute passed almost two years ago that said, "Hey, the CRAs now need to actually issue a separate standalone audit report document." Uh, for the most part, it's the same numbers as are in the... For the most part, it's the same numbers as are in the citywide financials, but just to highlight that that separate report was issued, and we had no findings reported in that standalone CRA audit report. So look at the numbers a little bit. We've got your general fund balance here. We take a three-year trend analysis with your five different categories of fund balance to kind of look at, okay, year over year, how have things changed? And looking at 2019 to 2020, we have about a $1.7 million increase in your total fund balance. Much of that relates to, if we go back a year ago, there was lots of uncertainty in terms of, okay, with the impact of COVID-19, what are revenues going to look like primarily? We looked at sales tax revenues, gas tax revenues, and in the month of April last year, when the state largely shut down, those revenues went off a cliff. Fortunately, they rebounded pretty quickly, but going through that budget process and in the immediate decision-making process, you know, staff definitely looked and said, hey, we don't know what kind of a, a hit we're gonna experience, so we need to hold back as much as we can on the expense side in order to not run a deficit if those revenues, you know, if we kind of had a worst-case scenario with those revenues. So between the revenue side being very favorable compared to kind of some of those initial fears or projections of what the COVID impact might look like, overall, ended up in a very favorable position, along with the CARES Act dollars that came in, that led to that overall increase in fund balance from 19 to 2020. The different buckets, a real quick refresher, the non-spendable relates to items such as inventory, where you can't spend it on something else because it's not in cash form, so that gets pulled out. The restricted fund balance is anything where you've got an external restriction in place. Most of your restricted dollars are in special revenue funds and tracked separately. To really have additional transparency and accountability over the use of those dollars, we do look at that as part of our audit, to make sure that those dollars are being spent in accordance with the applicable laws, regulations, or otherwise. And we came across no issues with regard to the, the proper spending of those restricted dollars. Then the committed largely here, this is primarily your stabilization reserve, that you all have adopted a policy in past years by resolution to set that, you know, for a sixty-day target going through the, the budget process. So we'll talk about that more in a second. And then the assigned and unassigned represents kind of the residual, no strings attached reserves. The assigned basically just means that it's been earmarked, but that earmark could be changed at any point in time. So to put it into perspective, if you take your assigned plus unassigned fund balance, as well as the $5.7 million that's in that stabilization reserve fund, you have about an $11 million available, so to speak, reserve in the general fund. Relative to about $39 million of expenditures in 2020, kind of put it into perspective as a percent, you're at about 28%, a little bit over three months, and increase, a small increase over about a 24% ratio last year. Kind of then put it into perspective, as I've shared in prior years, the GFOA, who does the evaluation of the annual financial report for that certificate program, they recommend that a general-purpose tax-supported government have no less than two months in reserves, and if you're coastal, they say three is probably a better minimum. So either way, you guys are over that minimum recommendation. I always do like to caution and emphasize that it is a minimum recommendation as far as kind of a best practice, but again, you, you all are over that and in the best shape that you've been in the four years that we've worked with the city. Looking at the business-type funds, these are primarily your water and sewer fund and other areas where charges for services are the primary revenue source. What we look at here largely, I focus more on the trend to say, okay, are these reserves moving in an upward or downward direction? Generally, all of these are in a, in a positive direction. Really, the only items of note is you do have three funds that show a negative number. The, all of those, it's entirely due to the OPEB liability that gets allocated. It's not really a cash liability. You're not gonna have to cut a check for those liabilities that show up. They do have to get reported that way, but from an operational or budget standpoint, all of those funds are in a very strong, positive position as well. So I do think it's important to highlight that fact, even though that for financial reporting, we do have to show these other liabilities that kind of represent more of just a long-term picture as opposed to anything that's an immediate budgetary consideration. Stormwater, there are, you know, there's a negative trend there. That's really just due to the timing of capital investments. There's been some heavy capital investments this most recent year, so it's a pretty small change. Normal fluctuations like that are not uncommon. But overall, as we look at these, we really see no, no red flags or anything else. All the funds look to be performing very well, generating positive cash from an operational standpoint, so much like the general fund in a very strong position here. One other future consideration that more so kind of relates to the general fund, although it will be standalone, is there is the, the money coming from the federal government, almost $8 million, related to the American Rescue Plan. And, you know, that will be a major impact financially to the city over the course of the next three and a half or so years. We're still waiting on guidance. I know every, I've had a ton of questions in recent weeks saying, hey, what can the money be used for? What are all the rules? And every time, it's kind of, all right, we don't really know. In that act, there was a sixty-day timeframe for the federal government to provide guidance, so hopefully, we'll have that sometime early next month. And I know, you know, your team and probably you all as well are, you know, ready to start looking at, okay, what are those options gonna be, and how is that guidance really clarified once it does get published? So I mentioned OPEB on the, the business-type funds. Pensions, of course, are a huge part of just these long-term liabilities, where I know most years, we actually, there's an actuary presentation at the same time that we do the audits. I know we're not doing that this evening, but to look at those liabilities, you do have to record the unfunded OPEB and pension liabilities on the financial statements. This has been the case for about four years now that both of those show up. OPEB, of course, had a, a pretty large impact about four years ago. I know there's been, you know, changes there, say, okay, how much is being funded, at least 50% of the required contribution. So that's, you know, there's been positive momentum in that direction. And on the pension side, when you look at this three-year trend, there is, just at, at face value, an increase to the unfunded liability for both pension plans. And the funded percentages, both dropped a tiny bit, but really, I want to highlight, you know, the positive fact, because these pensions, it's, it's a long-term game. You know, you never want to make a snap decision to say, okay, you know, the plan looks great one year, let's do X, or the plan looks really bad, we need to do something differently. It's really about the long-term planning. And again, many of those decisions are made by the pension board, so it's not a direct decision of the council. But what I do want to highlight is the, the over 90% funded ratios are very positive. And then the other kind of factor in what changed from last year to this year, that was a huge driver of those unfunded liabilities increasing, is that the most significant impact to a pension liability is what the assumed rate of return is on that plan. So basically, every year, the pension boards have to say, in perpetuity, we expect the investments to earn X percent. And as you can see on this chart here, in the last four years, those assumed rates have gone from 8% down to 7.5%. There was a quarter percent change this year. Just by flipping that quarter percent, that immediately increases that unfunded liability, and that's a huge part of what changed that. But the bottom line here is that 7.5% is getting much more in line with where we've seen lots of other plans, which is always good to see, because the lower that percentage, the lesser the potential exposure for those investment assumptions not being met. That could then result in additional required contributions years down in the future. So we did compare this, like, last year to the Florida retirement system, which, different plan, of course. I have no basis to say what rate of return is or is not attainable, but that 7.5% is still one that's kind of right at that, probably, top end of where we see most plans. We've seen a continued trend across the board of many plans reducing those rates. But the bottom line again is, you know, those positive movements have been made to mitigate any possible exposure. And, and either way, you know, at over 90% funded, all of those plans are in exceptionally good health, and even if those, that assumed rate came down a bit more, those would still be in the probably upper to maybe mid-80% funded. So overall, your pension plans are looking very, very good from an overall financial health standpoint. So with that, that covers all my comments. I would be more than glad to answer any questions anyone might have.
Any questions, Council? I've seen nothing on my lights here. Nobody? I see no questions. That's, that's rare. So I would simply say that it, it means a lot to me in, in just writing down a few of the words that you spoke. The city is in a very strong financial position. No red flags. Best audit of my four years with the city, and the budget is functioning very well. Doesn't mean there's not places to improve, but I, I think our team does a great job, and I'm very excited that we seem to be moving in the right direction. And again, the city is in a very strong financial position, is the quote. So I appreciate that very much, and thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Good to see everyone.
City Manager.
Yes, sir. We're on to Agenda 4B, which is a list of employees' names that receive letters of recommendate, or letters of appreciation, which are, I'll read for the record. Christian Asbury from the Building Department, Tracy Davis from Neighborhood Services, Terry Franklin from Neighborhood Services, Eddie Galindo from the Planning Department, Mark Jones from the Planning Department, Candy Flower as a collection specialist, and Matt Hickson from the Water Reclamation Department.
Thank you very much. That would move us to petitions and requests from the public.
One more item.
I missed it.
We have Item D, which is the Police Department will provide an overview on their department. This is the departmental reviews that we're providing during each presentation. Chief Lauer?
I'm, I'm, I'm not ignoring you, chief. I actually got my briefing. I had to go out of town, so I kind of, that's not on my sheet, and I missed it. I apologize.
Well, when I was picking, I should have thought this through, following Caffer audits. Probably not the smartest thing I've ever done.
All right, sir. Thank you so much for being here. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to let us boast on our amazing employees that we have. We've prepared a brief forty-minute video. If you can roll the video, please. Uh, malfunction, sir.
Hi, my name is John Lauer, and I am your police chief here at the City of Titusville. It is my privilege to spotlight the 150 amazing men and women who make up the Titusville Police Department. Our department motto is promoting teamwork within our community, and our culture here at the Police Department reflects just that. Everything we do is in the best interest of our community and the folks that visit our fine city. Our Police Department is made up of two bureaus, Administrative and Operations. And what you are about to see in this brief video will describe the day-to-day business here at the Police Department. Some of the information will be obvious, such as police officers patrolling or our 911 operators dispatching emergency calls. However, you will also learn about some of our unsung heroes who work behind the scenes to help keep our city safe.
Our administrative bureau is the part of our agency that primarily works behind the scenes, but please do not misunderstand just how critical their work is. Administration is made up of professional standards, internal affairs, accreditation, recruitment, training, records, and logistics.
Just like the United States Constitution provides a roadmap for our fifty states and citizens alike, Professional Standards provides the same direction for both the citizens of Titusville as well as our Titusville Police Team. Professional Standards establishes a set of rules in the form of policies and procedures for our department members, mirroring the laws established by our state and our nation. Much like the Constitution provides a roadmap of laws for our fifty states and the citizens of our country, Professional Standards establishes the same direction for both our citizens of Titusville as well as our Titusville Police Team. Having established rules and duties allows us to be transparent with our department members as well as the citizens we serve. After we establish our rules and duties, Professional Standards is in task with teaching our employees about all of our policies and updating them on any revisions. This is conducted through our training section.
Our training section not only provides training for all of our internal staff, but they also host many outside training classes throughout the year. By TPD hosting these classes, we are able to send our employees to attend these trainings at no cost, which saves our city close to $20,000 annually. One of our achievements that our community can be most proud of is our certification by the Commission of Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation. This prestigious affiliation by the State of Florida has been maintained since 2010. To be accredited, the agency must meet hundreds of specific policy requirements and standards established by the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation. This process consists of a board of three assessors from outside agencies made up of both sworn officers and civilians. Our records section is responsible for keeping track of all police department documents, including police reports, accident reports, affidavits of compliance, and more. Many of the described duties have time constraints as directed by Florida state statute and/or legal guidelines. If these time restraints are not adhered to, this can lead to prosecutorial issues with a state attorney's office, which may include lawsuits regarding public record requests and other violations of state and federal guidelines. Annually, our records section handles approximately 5,000 written case files, 90,000 incident reports, 3,000 traffic citations, 10,000 public record requests, more than 800 a month, and 9,500 written accident reports.
Given the current environment of the policing profession, recruiting the next generation of police officers is more difficult than ever before. With the pressures, demands, and expectations of the community, finding qualified candidates that want to fill this uncertain and dangerous position can be a daunting task. Our philosophy is finding men and women from our own community who have the heart to do the job, and then our incredible instructor staff can teach them the rest.
Our operations bureau is traditionally what you would expect to hear about when referring to a police department. Operations is made up of patrol, criminal investigations, special investigations, victim's advocate, school resource officers, crime scene and evidence, 911 communications, public affairs, community watch, and crossing guards.
Operations is made up of highly skilled and motivated employees who are truly at the front line of the Titusville Police Department. These men and women make up our Uniform Patrol Division, Criminal Investigations Division, and our 911 Public Safety Telecommunication Section. Because we are determined to be as effective as possible, we are committed to the concept of strong and timely communication between our officers on the street, our detectives investigating their cases, as well as the members of our community. We are convinced a proactive approach to policing is far more effective than just responding to calls for service. This concept is achieved through community-oriented policing. Follow-up investigations is a responsibility of our detective section. The detective section is comprised of criminal investigations detectives, special or vice-investigations detectives, as well as our victim's advocate.
One of the most frequent complaints our department receives from the public are traffic-related, with the top two being speeding on the Amex Brewer Memorial Parkway and reckless driving through neighborhoods. Traffic complaints, along with traffic crashes, have consistently increased over the years. We believe the reason for this is our increasing copulation, along with distractions such as phones, devices, and onboard computer screens which operate the automobile. We have responded to 345 traffic crashes since January 2021, three of which involve fatalities. That is an increase of 22% over the same period last year. What's more alarming is the accidents with injuries involved have gone up nearly 40% we attribute to distracted driving. With the advances in technology over the years, our crime scene investigation section is more critical in solving crime than ever before. Our crime scene technicians are highly trained in the collection of forensic evidence and utilize special equipment, chemicals, and other techniques to collect DNA and fingerprints at the scene of a crime. What is often overlooked is the amount of time it takes to properly process a crime scene. One crime scene could actually take 24 to 48 hours to collect all of the potential evidence. Our CSI section receives an average of 800 to 1,000 pieces of evidence per month and currently houses nearly 50,000 pieces of evidence.
The city's Code Enforcement Division handles prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement of all violations of state statutes or ordinances regulating public health, safety and welfare, business activities, consumer protection, building standards, land use, and municipal affairs. The code enforcement main strategy is guided by three primary objectives for our citizens and businesses. One, to ensure all property owners are treated equally by creating a standardized process with resolution for code violation. We first try to prevent code violations, then resolve and only use the enforcement tools such as a code enforcement special magistrate and/or fines when absolutely necessary. tools such as a Code Enforcement Special Magistrate and/or fines when absolutely necessary to create an effective and easily manageable database of all existing code violations within the city. Overall, our strategy aims to create a predictable path from longstanding code violations and improve the efficiency of the Code Enforcement program and staff.
At the very front line of public safety is our 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators, better known as 911 Dispatchers.
The Communication Center is an entity of the Police Department, provides 911 and radio communications not only for the Police Department, but also the 911 and radio communications for the Titusville Fire and Emergency Services. The Communication Center has allotted 22 full-time 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators and four contractual employees who fill in as needed to maintain proper coverage. Our 911 center processed more than 115,000 phone calls in 2020. These calls resulted in more than 90,000 calls for service processed on behalf of the Police Department and more than 9,000 calls processed on behalf of the Fire Department.
The Titusville Police Department has always placed an emphasis on the safety of our youth. Nothing illustrates this more than a look at our School Resource Officer Program.
For more than 25 years, we've had a footprint in our local schools through our partnership with Brevard Public Schools. The School Resource Officer Program is so much more than providing security in our schools. It is actually a mentoring program designed to break any barriers between our police officers and the students and staff of our schools. Building relationships with our students, their parents, and school staff is a key to the SRO program. This concept has prevented several potentially tragic incidents over the years.
As you can see, there are a lot of moving parts to the day-to-day operations of your Police Department. However, when you have 150 dedicated and talented people, there is no wonder that it runs so smoothly. And last, but certainly not least, our narrator of this video is our very own Public Affairs Coordinator, Amy Matthews. In our current time, we cannot afford to be disconnected with our community, and Amy takes that fact extremely seriously. Amy is responsible for communicating to the public the daily operations of this department. She conducts approximately 300 police-involved community events per year, updates our website and social media pages, and is our Public Information Officer, acting as a liaison to the local news affiliates. Thank you for watching our presentation. I hope you found this video informative and that you enjoyed watching this video as much as we enjoyed highlighting our amazing team. Be safe, Titusville. A very, very big thanks to Titusville's Media Services. Curtis knocked it out of the park. Amy knocked it out of the park. They've been working pretty much around the clock for the past few days. Could not have happened without them, so thank you, guys. Also, there was no way we could get everything and everybody in the video when you have a department with that many moving parts. One of the things we're asked very often over the past year is, how are the officers holding up with, you know, all of the attention, negative attention on law enforcement throughout the country? I will tell you that the officers handle it just fine. This community is absolutely terrific. They're very supportive of all of our officers, men and women. I think that's pretty much standard throughout Brevard County, but I'll speak here in Titusville. So we are blessed, we know we're blessed with the amazing community we have. Our policies, you know, have been scrutinized, but they've been scrutinized by our internal staff. And what we have found is they are far and above where they need to be, and we are constantly scrubbing to see if there's an area, a place that we can improve upon. But so far, everything that has come from a lot of the national attention, we had already had in place for very, you know, very good reasons. And then very last, truly, the men and women that we have on staff right now just do an amazing job. I think, quite frankly, they're handling it better than some of the veteran folks, you know, with the ridiculous, it's no big deal, it's no big deal. This is a pendulum and it too will go back and forth, but everything is fine here with your Police Department. We do have three top issues that we're dealing with, and the very first one is recruiting. As you heard Sergeant Joyner explain, it is challenging to find people. Our theory is if we can find someone who has the heart to do it, our instructors are the best around. They'll teach them how to do police work. Police work, if you have the heart for it, is actually very easy to learn because it's all about heart. You have to have the right disposition and attitude to go into it. We can teach report writing, we can teach some of the laws and everything. That's the easy part with the right heart. Over the past, well, since January 1 of 2020, we have hired 19 police officers, 24 employees. That's an enormous amount of employees to be processed in that time period. The disturbing part to this is we've lost 16 officers. So, and for a myriad of reasons. One of the top is, in this time, every police agency is short-staffed, and so some of the larger agencies that pay significantly more can, you know, scoop up a lot of the very well-trained officers. It's part of, it's part of what happens and we deal with it. We are dealing with it through our own benefit package, we're dealing with it through other internal means other than salary and benefits, career development programs, and tuition reimbursement to insist that our officers, you know, get a higher education. So we are, we are making headway. Another area we have made a tremendous amount of improvement is we are starting to be able to recruit locally. This is what we've wanted to do for years, but it's challenging. If, you know, we can't, we can't twist someone's arm into becoming part of our police team. So we're really wanting our community to bring forward with candidates so that we can move forward. But over the 19 officers over that time period, 42% of them were minority officers, and that's a very important thing during this time because we want to keep up with the demographics of our city. Very, very underrated thing. So now, we meet or exceed in every area across the board, and that's something that I am so proud of our Administration Section for getting that done. Second issue facing our agency is overdose calls. In that same time period, we have handled 118 overdose calls. It's an epidemic, it's an epidemic nationwide. Most of the overdoses are involving fentanyl, which I know we have been here talking about that before and you see it in the news. It's, we're just going to keep on plugging away. What have we done to address that? Well, just this past weekend, we had the DEA National Take Back Pill Initiative at Walmart. So during the last year, 2020, with the virus, it has been very challenging because a lot of our programs and outreach that we've done was pretty much put on hold. So we were able to open up, and this pill giveback is, you go to a doctor, you have a shoulder issue, maybe you have half your script of pain medicine left, or it could be an antibiotic for that matter, and it's just sitting in your house. This is an opportunity to have residents just bring pills back. We collected five boxes and 100 pounds of pills in the window of opportunity, and that was Sergeant Barber, Detective Burkett, as well as our very own Amy Matthews that were doing that project. In addition, we have seized just this year, January, February, March, we're looking at 400 grams of heroin and fentanyl, we're looking at probably around 200 grams of cocaine. This one is staggering, over 300 grams of MDMA or methamphetamine or pills. So our detectives are doing an amazing job. We've served five search warrants in the past six weeks and have gotten just tons of guns and illegal drugs. So we are stepping up and doing what we have to do, but I will tell you, it is very challenging because there's so much out there. So we're doing what we can when we can. And then the very last thing is juveniles and young adult crime. Violent crime from our young adults is just unacceptable, unacceptable. This past year, our crime rate in 2020 went down 27%. Every single crime index had a negative number to it except for homicides. Homicides went up 150%, all of which were young men shooting young men. Unacceptable. And it's often put back onto the police agency or the city, the municipal agency, and it's, this is a family issue. This is kids, these are 13-year-olds, 14-year-olds that are out at hours of the night where parents and guardians have to be there. So not to just throw the blame on that, we have to do something different. There's no other choice. We have to do something different because it's going to have to be a village that raises these kids because it's not working. Right now, what's happening does not work. So that, those are our struggles. In the past year, we had 400, 400 shooting calls since January 1 of 2020. 400. I mean, this is staggering. Working towards, we have a meeting, working towards the Titusville Police Community Relations Council. I think that will help, but to be very honest with you, our agency and our staff is, are very approachable, and we meet with groups all over the place and anytime, anyplace. We truly don't know the word "no." So yes, it's another opportunity to increase communication, but we are here, and if there's anyone out there that has any other suggestions, we are certainly willing to listen. But this isn't just here in Titusville. If you watch the news, there's, I believe, a 16-year-old was shot over in Orange County last night. You know, he's dead. It's horrible. It is epidemic, and that is the true problem that we're facing. So with that said, certainly ready for any questions.
Mayor, if I could real quick, we would like to invite City Council. We have a penning ceremony tomorrow at the Police Department at 09:30, Chief, if you would, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, we have three folks that we're squaring in tomorrow at 09:30, and we usually have a lot of really, really good refreshments.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Donuts, but unfortunately with the virus, but we will have some beverage and all, but it is a family-type thing. They'll have their family there, and it's really neat to see if you would like, we would love to have you.
First of all, I appreciate that, and secondly, Willie Taylor didn't ask me, he told me I'd be there, so I will be there. Secondly, what an outstanding video presentation about an outstanding department. It really was nice to see. You kind of think you know everything that goes on, and then you see, oh, I knew that, but I forgot about that, I didn't realize that. So I appreciate that very much, and I would say there's a lot of strengths in the program. You and I and City Manager, various times, we tend to be sitting on panels or in different places, and I would say, you know, over the years, one of the strongest things that our department has, I think, is communication. And I think it starts with you because there are certainly a lot of chiefs or a lot of bosses or a lot of supervisors that don't communicate well and don't want to communicate. They simply want to do it their way and leave me alone. You've never been that way. And your door is open, I don't know if you even lock your door at night. I mean, the bottom line is, you talk to people, and you're willing to talk to them and talk to them and talk to them, and I appreciate that. And I think that trickles down to your staff because your entire department seems to communicate very well. So I think that's a strength we don't ever want to lose, and I think you had that up and you had that up very well, and I appreciate that very much and I appreciate the department very much. And Vice Mayor Nelson.
Well, you took part of that, by the way, but...
That's what you get to do when you go first sometimes.
Okay. But seriously, John, I think a lot of the reasons that we have so few problems is because you are always talking to people and your staff's always talking to people. And I think it makes a difference when you can sit down and talk to people and say, this is why we're doing this, and have that communication and have that understanding. And I think that's lacking in some other departments. I won't mention departments, but you know, I know every department in the county, and I think Titusville's number one. So I think that's a credit to you and to your staff. I am going to say on the overdose cases, apparently Chief Rowland done what Eugene Oregon is doing, where they're having a social worker actually respond. Have you thought about it, or what do you think?
So there's always a pro and a con. It's, if you were handling, if we were a large enough agency where we had one car that handled those type cases all night long, it'd be great, but we're also handling very serious calls with young men sticking their whole body out with an AK-47 shooting, and it's very dangerous. So, you know, we could certainly look into it. What we've, I, our staff is very, very good at copying the good programs that work, and so we're monitoring that type thing right now. And look, there are merits to having someone professional, but even a, even a minor situation can turn on a dime into a life and death situation, and it's something if you don't have the training for that, we really don't like having civilian folks in that there. But we are open-minded to looking at that.
I was just wondering, because I know Eugene had the program and apparently has had it for like 20 years, 20, 30 years, and then they said Orlando's doing it. I was like, hmm, how's it working for them?
They just started. Orange County and Orlando started similar. They're not exactly the same, but we're monitoring both of those agencies to see. They're a large enough jurisdiction where you can have one car respond throughout a very large city or county. Titusville is just not built that way. Maybe we can do something with follow-up, you know, where we identify a family and then follow up on our time or in their time.
Yeah, because you have your victim advocate.
We do. And she is the conduit to all of those programs, and you should see her caseloads. So it's, she's working hard.
She needs to keep busy.
She does.
And how did you...
Yes, we are.
Yes. We'll have success eventually.
Absolutely.
Member Jordan. I'm not sure how to start this, but I'll just say it for sure. You alluded to the fact that there's a lot of stuff going on nationally, and I would tell you that my heart just bleeds because I think about our Police Department and I think about these policemen and women are human beings, and it's really hard to come to a job when you believe that society is looking on police officers a certain way when it's just a few that are causing a black blemish on great police departments. But as Joe Lynn and the mayor said, you know, it really starts at the top. I know you don't want to hear this, but I know your character, I know your heart, and I can tell you that that definitely transcends into your department and it's very much appreciated. I think our citizens sleep very well at night knowing that you're ahead of the department. And I know you've got challenges because you just enumerated a lot of stuff that, you know, with Joe Blow, we'll never hear or know about. I've ridden along with police and I'd like to do it again, you know, and hopefully this COVID thing can go away. I will tell you categorically that when you have human beings who goes toward the danger, that says a lot about the character of our police and human beings particularly. So I'm very much appreciated. I appreciate what you all are doing. It kind of scared me about your numbers, bringing in 19, then losing. I mean, that's, you know, that's a lot, and I know it's various reasons. Some of them, I can guarantee you, I can't do this anymore. There is stress in being a police officer every day. You just never know what crazy is out there. And for you, as a human being, to do something that is unnatural because your body want to protect you, and now we're asking a police officer to go toward... officer to go toward a shooting, and you don't know what's there. And just to hear that these young people mostly are doing the worst crimes, to me, is pretty sad, and you don't have the answer for that. You can't have the answer to that because it does start with the family. It starts with people taking hold of that hard-headed junior and telling them, no, this is the way it's going to be. The unfortunate thing, and I've heard that a lot of the parents are grandparents, and they're afraid of their grandkids because they put that fear in these older, and they're not agile, so they can't do a lot of things. So, I don't, I wish I could wave a magic wand and say, you know, this is how it's going to be, and we can fix these things, but we have a societal problem, and the persons and persons who are standing in the gap are police officers, and we really need to give you all the honor that you're due and hopefully help with the situation as far as what society's looking at. These bad cops are really giving good cops a bad name. It's just not fair. So, I appreciate the police department. I appreciate what you do. I appreciate your heart, and whatever we can do, I can do specifically, I certainly want to do to make sure that every police officer knows that they've got the support of at least this individual. Basically, collectively, we support our police.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Stokoe.
Thank you. So, I have a few things. First off, just want to echo what I think has already been said. I hope you guys know how much I appreciate the proactive measures that I feel like the entire department does. It makes it very easy to boast about you guys, especially when I do presentations regarding community engagement. You guys are always my go-to, and I think that just shows kind of, I think, hopefully you guys feel how much the community loves and appreciates you guys. And I feel like we have just been a step ahead of what other departments are now trying to catch up and do. One of the things that does concern me, which has been, is the recruiting and the retention component. I'm concerned that people are coming to our department. We're recruiting them, which I know is challenging enough, but then they're going through what I would assume is some good training, getting that training, and then up and leaving for various reasons. So, with that, do you guys do any type of exit interviews to see why people are leaving and what do you feel is happening?
We have, over the past five years, we've lost more officers than ever before that left literally after a call, and they're driving with their training officer back to the station. Well, where are you going? Ah, this isn't for me. Isn't for me. So, we've never seen it like it is now. It isn't what you think. Unfortunately, TV might be entertaining and movies might be entertaining, but it's just not that at all. It's just not how it works. In addition, all police agencies all over the country are short-staffed. If you see the larger agencies, they're losing hundreds at a clip, hundreds, and they're 30% understaffed. So, when Orlando Police Department recruits, and we've lost, I don't know, six to eight to Orlando Police Department, you know, it's a very difficult department to get in. So, on one hand, our staff is very proud that we have the candidates that can go over to there, you know, and it's just, we can't compete with that. And when you're a young man or woman with a family, $20,000, $30,000 a year, difference to start is it's difficult to overcome that.
Yeah, and that's where I'm wondering if we should look at the benefits potentially because I know that does cost us money to recruit, go through all the training, and then lose them. Like, those are costs there.
We are actively, and our city manager is constantly working with our team to look at ways to improve, and we have. We've been improving, and the career development program is something that has become not just something that can put a few dollars in a pocket if you do these achievements, but it's become a morale for our agency, and we have physical agility testing where everyone will come out on their own time to watch and root on and, you know, do all that stuff. So, we have, we're doing some very, very good things. This is not the normal time where, this is just not normal. I will tell you that it's going to, it's already starting to slow down where the jobs are now being filled, so the openings aren't as plentiful. Orlando is putting two to three classes of 30 to 40 officers per year. I mean, they're recruiting from central Florida. It's very difficult to deal with that. And again, it's flattering that we had so many able to go.
That's what I'm saying. I feel like they go through probably really good training and mentorship within our department, and then bye-bye, like...
So, what do you do? Do you become that agency where you don't train your folks? That to us is silly. You know, we're still going to continue to train the way we do, and just about every single one that's left, they always say the same thing, even 10, 15 years later. It's never been like it was at Titusville. We had a family in Titusville. I did what I did. I'm not regretting what the move was, but it's never been like it was in Titusville. We hear it constantly.
Yeah, and then the last thing is in regards to the crime, which, yeah, I know we get like snippets sometimes of the shootings and overdoses. Is it possible, and I don't know if you guys do this now, for us to receive like weekly report of the crimes, like the shootings or the overdoses, just so when we go through our planning process and budgeting, we're aware to see if there's something that we can maybe think outside the box to kind of help solve the issue?
Yes, I will meet with the city manager, and we can help us out. Absolutely.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Member Robinson.
Hello, Chief.
How are you?
One of the hardest things in the world to do is to get up in the morning and lead a group of men and women into harm's way, and you do that well. I hear from the individuals at ground level, I hear a name of probably more than mayor, probably Coach Diesel, and I hear John Law, and the communication back to me is that you listen. It's not always that you do because you have your requirements to adhere to, but I just wanted to share with you that the word that comes my way is that you listen. And communication is the biggest key. As a member of the council has said, there is no immediate cure to what we are experiencing, but to lead individuals that get up and put on that vest every day and to have to have the heart, the love, and the toughness to be able to say when they walk out of the door, "I'll see you later," those are some powerful words, and leadership is what it takes to make it happen. Keep on growing, keep on doing, and my best to you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? I see none. Chief, thank you very much for everything.
Now, we move to petitions or requests from the public. That's a start. Haven't seen that one. All right, go ahead.
Dan Johnson, 860 points. I'm here as a professional engineer, and I've lived here for quite a while. I gave you that tape, that tape measure, and what it represents, it has your name on it, and it's quoting somebody. It's, who said, some years ago, he said, "Judge not lest ye be judged." And he also said, "What you measure other people by is beware because you be measured by the same thing." So, what I'm doing is I'm challenging you, I'm challenging everyone to judge me because I'm certainly judging some people here. And there's a, we were just talking about communication, and right now is that I'm concerned about communication here, especially communication with city manager, council members. Fact is, what I've done for the last 18 months, I've offered $100 to anybody, anybody in our community, anyone who can get the city manager or council member to meet with us, in other words, the guy who does it, who gets the, our girl gets the, and to meet with us for an hour, I'll give him $100. So, we're in such a desperate situation as far as communication, I can't even get, pay anybody $100 to meet with a council member or city, or mayor, city manager. Of course, he's not here right now. Oh, there he is. So, last meeting, I spoke to you about the March 12 incident, and which I'm not blaming the police for that because they're doing what they're doing, but I was whisked away behind my back, and my three police officers had taken outside, and I've, and I do not have a reason yet why that happened. And so, if I do it again unknowingly, what am I going, what's going to happen to me? So, I've asked you, Mr. Diesel, to find out, or somebody let me know what I did wrong. In fact, is, is that I'm being discredited in some ways. Well, in many ways. There's a, over two years ago, city manager and mayor and Mrs. Nelson was approached about, they approached, they said that they've got a report, it costs $70,000 by the city, and they can't find it, that said that I'm a worthless incompetent engineer. Well, I've even offered $1,000 for anyone who can give me that report, and I had no comments, no apologies, no nothing, but it still continues today, $1,000. I think that'd be a good thing for you to comment on, Mr. Diesel. And for 30 to 30, 30 and 35 years ago, we've had all kinds of problems.
Time's up, sir.
No warning.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. Hope your response. I didn't see a yellow light. We need to work on that. All right, we'll adjourn this meeting and begin again at 7:05. Meeting adjourned.